To order of the City of Torrington Council, this is Tuesday, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Good evening and welcome. We have here with us tonight Ryan Kaeth from K E R M KGOS Radio. This council meeting is being broadcast live over the local radio stations and also on YouTube. We also have Amber Wolfington here from the Torrington Telegram. This is Tuesday, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. This is the eighth council meeting of the year, second council meeting in April. Our first order of business is the pledge of allegiance, and I've asked Councilman Wayne Deal if he will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda are the mayor's informational items. It may seem early, but now is the time to mark your calendars for the National Day of Prayer. This is a non-denominational, non-political gathering for prayer. There will be prayers for our country, our leaders, our children and youth, our military, and more. The citizens of Goshen County are invited to meet on Thursday, May first, on the south side of the courthouse, joining with citizens throughout the nation on this day which is set aside for prayer. Those participating will be asking God to intervene in our lives in ways large and small. The gathering will last for approximately a half an hour, starting at twelve ten P. M. Please join us in exercising our right to assemble and our right to free speech as we approach God in repentance, supplication, and thanksgiving. Again, the National Day of Prayer, Thursday, May first, starting at twelve ten P. M. On the south side of the Goshen County courthouse. I also want to mention three upcoming Easter egg hunts. The first one is in Torrington. That is the KGOS, K E R M Easter egg hunt, which will take place in City Park on Saturday, April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, from one P. M. to three P. M. I understand there are age groups, one to three, four to six, and seven to nine. Again, upcoming Easter egg hunts, Torrington KGOS and K E R M Easter egg hunt, City Park, Saturday, April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, one P. M. to three P. M., age groups one to three, four to six, and seven to nine. Also, Fort Laramie, on Saturday, April nineteenth, at one P. M., children are invited to Fort Laramie North Park, where age groups of zero to two years, three to five years, six to eight years, and ages nine to twelve can hunt for eggs. Again, Fort Laramie, Saturday, April nineteenth, at one P. M., children are invited to Fort Laramie North Park, where age groups of zero to two years, three to five years, six to eight years, and ages nine to twelve can hunt for eggs. And last one upcoming is at Hawk Springs. On Saturday, April nineteenth, the Hawk Springs Volunteer Fire and Rescue will kick off the annual Easter celebration for ages zero to three years, pre-kindergarten and kindergarten, first and second graders, third and fourth graders, and fifth and sixth graders at ten A. M. in Hawk Springs. Again, Hawk Springs, on Saturday, April eighth nineteen, the Hawk Springs Volunteer Fire and Rescue will kick off the annual Easter celebrations for ages zero to three years, pre-kindergarten and kindergarten, first and second graders, third and fourth graders, and fifth and sixth graders at ten A. M. in Hawk Springs. This is Holy Week, please have a blessed week, and I wish all a very blessed and happy Easter Sunday. With the nice weather, we have much more traffic, vehicles, motorcycles, bicycles, scooters, and pedestrians. Please take special care to watch out for all this additional traffic. As always, please slow down, please yield to best pedestrians, and please do not use your cellphones while driving. I want to announce the city's annual spring cleanup dates. This is Saturday, May third, through Saturday, May tenth. Bring your garbage to the baler from seven A. M. to seven P. M., Monday through Friday. And then Saturday, May third, and Saturday, May tenth, the baler will be open from seven A. M. to three P. M. Yes, ma'am?
I don't think they'll be open till seven P. M.
I'm sorry, I misspoke, seven A. M. to four B. M. on weekdays, and then on those two Saturdays during that period, from seven A. M. to three P. M. All right. In order to take advantage of this, this free baler trip, you must have a city bill with a sanitation charge on your bill and a valid I. D. to dump for free. You are always welcome to dump with a fee otherwise. There is a limit of five tires without rims per household and no commercial tires, heavy truck, or equipment tires. Also, no hazardous chemicals or paint. Freezers and refrigerators must be tagged as free-on-free by a licensed agent. This information is also on the city website, and I believe it's also on your utility bill. So that's our annual spring cleanup time. I also want to talk about Wyoming Community Gas briefly. Balloting is going on, that balloting will be going on through April twenty-third. Either you received a ballot in the mail, which you can fill out, or if you want, you can come to City Hall, to the front office part of City Hall, and the ladies up there are very happy to help you out with that balloting process if you're having troubles or you just want their assistance. I really support the Wyoming Community Gas program because it brings money back into the city, then allows us to have funds for community projects and E. W. C. scholarships. Again, balloting for Wyoming Community Gas is open through April twenty-third. Thank you, folks. And Lynette, thank you for the correction on the times on the spring cleanup. All right. First item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the April first twenty-five council meeting as published. I have a motion from Councilman Kelly to approve the consent agenda as set forth. Do I have a second? Second from Councilman Deal. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda as presented signify by saying aye. Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the consent agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda itself.
Mr. Mayor would move to approve the agenda as presented?
I have a motion from Councilman Victorin to approve the agenda as presented. Do I have a second? I think it was Councilman Kelly, second by Councilman Kelly. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All those in favor of approval of the agenda signify by saying aye. Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the agenda is approved. Next item on our agenda, this item is always on there, we call it the public forum. There are no takers this evening, otherwise, if there were, I would see a slip in that black box in front of Councilman Warren. But I do like to explain this section of the agenda. This is for non-agenda items. There is a time limit of two minutes, and the speaker must sign up before the meeting. This is a time for council to listen, no action will be taken. Next item on the agenda is an information item, and that is item number one, Wyoming Child and Family Development, Development Disabilities Local Match Presentation. And I have references here on my agenda, Ms. Deb Grandy and Ms. Jessica Rohr. Yes, ma'am, welcome to the podium. And are you Ms. Grandy or Ms.?
I am Ms. Grandy, I'm the director at T. L. C.
Okay, welcome.
Jessica was unable to come tonight. Did you guys receive this in the mail? Do you want copies?
I think we have all that attached to our agenda.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for bringing them.
Well, I appreciate your time this evening. A little bit about T. L. C., we are a childcare provider, and we provide early intervention services for our county. Our team at the Torrington Learning Center is proud to serve various children with very specific needs. We provide language therapy to fifty-six children, occupational therapy to twelve children, physical therapy to four children, and services for one child with a hearing needs. Our mission is to create an inclusive environment that caters to each child's unique requirements. Beyond these therapies, the W. C. F. D. and Lincoln Infant Toddler Center, or L. T. C., offer free developmental screenings, including health, hearing, and vision checks to any child in the community aged birth to five years. These screenings are important for early detection of potential developmental delays and allow for timely intervention. Our trained staff uses plus-optic vision screeners and are also trained with the hearing. In Goshen County alone, we have screened one hundred and forty children between January first and December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-four, and have provided early intervention services to sixty, all at no cost to their families. As we look ahead to the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six fiscal year, we are reaching out to our local communities for support. In total, we're seeking a local match of eighteen thousand dollars to help sustain and enhance the services we offer. We are asking for your contribution of two thousand dollars, which has been traditional. Finally, and most importantly, investing in early intervention is an investment in our future. Research such as the Perry Preschool Project has shown that every dollar invested in high-quality pre-kindergarten and early intervention services can save as much as seven dollars in later costs, including crime, welfare, and special education. In conclusion, your support is essential for us to continue providing these important services for our children. I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Grandy, we appreciate it.
Yes, do you have any questions?
Council, do you have any questions for Ms. Grandy? I have just a couple.
Okay.
So, in Torrington, you're from T. L. C., Torrington Learning Center, that's the one that's up by the college.
Yes.
And can you briefly describe what that facility does for the local children?
Yes, we have three classrooms for head start services, so those children are three to five years old. And then we have one classroom for the early head start, which is zero to three-year-old, and those are also served down here at L. T. C. We also house R. D. D. providers, and so they come into our center and provide those services to children needing those services. We provide meals and supplies, everything that that child needs for the time that they're with us, diapers, wipes, whatever they need, we have it there for them at no cost to the families if they are eligible for our services.
So that was T. L. C. you just described. So L. I. T. C., you call it L. T. C., right?
Yes, yes.
That's in our city building here.
Correct.
Can you describe what?
That it is literally the exact same thing, but it serves zero to three-year-olds. So the people that are providing these services for the developmental will come into those classrooms and provide those services for the eligible children. So we provide childcare and pre-kindergarten for early outcomes.
And I just know from experience in the community, both your facilities are highly used by folks in this community.
Yeah, we usually have a waitlist for people to receive our services, so.
Just thinking of two questions while you had the conversation there, Mr. Mayor. Our assistance that we provide you annually, I would probably say that it is a public good. It's only for the program, it's not for administrative costs, is that correct?
Yeah, if you look on the second page, ninety to ninety-three percent of the overall cost to run each program goes to children's services, and seven to ten percent of the overall cost is administrative. So the local match funds are part of a requirement that we have to raise money in our communities to match the funds that we receive.
And then the second question, where would you say the majority of your enrollment comes from? Does it come from within the city of Torrington, or does the majority come from the county?
We have both, we have several children that come from the county. For children that are in the city, we can provide some busing services. But I would say it's a fairly even mix for the county's population. We have a few kids from the outlying areas, and the bulk of our children are from Torrington.
That's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, is there anything else?
No, I appreciate your coming and presenting to us, Ms. Grandy, thank you. All right, we have now gone into action items on the agenda. The first item, number one, under action items, is amended audited financial statements for F. Y. two thousand and twenty-four. And I'll initially call on Mrs. Strecker, and we do have Paul still here with us from Lee O'Reilly, he's on the phone.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Paul Stili is on the phone to explain the differences and what took place when we discovered that we needed to amend the audited financial statements. So if you want to let him speak, he should be on the telephone.
Okay, Mr. Stili, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yes, well, I thank you for your time, and I apologize. I needed to set the record straight with the council here and everybody there in Torrington. When I was there, two, or what, a month ago, I spoke of that we had a streamlined reporting requirement that we can meet the federal audit requirements with, and it was my error, I was incorrect in that. That was only available to the initial block grant of the ARPA money that you received, and so I was in error in that. And so when Lynette went to submit the report, it wasn't allowing it to go through. And so we did a little more research and came to the conclusion that that was not available to the city. We amended our reports, dual-dated them, it did not change any of the financial statement numbers or anything like that, it just changed how we reported to the federal government. And so we got that corrected and amended, and we were able to submit the reports to the federal government then, and we submitted corrected reporting, it's just on the reporting, numbers to D. O. Department of Audit, D. O. Department of Transportation, and S. L. I. B. And they have, I believe, accepted that, they have responded to me, and when I explained that and sent them in on that, and I think we are now good to go, and I do apologize for that. The mayor and I and Lynette discussed this a couple weeks ago, and it just happened to fall in between the meeting on April first and the meeting today, and right after the meeting on the first, and I wanted to set the record straight with the council and let them know what was going on on that, and if there's been corrective reports made available to the city, and you would have them through Lynette, or I can send new copies, or the revised copies to them. That's all I wanted to cover, I do apologize, it was an error on my part, and I do believe we've got it all squared away though now.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stili. Gentlemen, do you have any questions for Mr. Stili? I don't see any questions for you, Paul, I appreciate that, and we're all squared away and good to go, right?
Yes, yes, Mayor, we are, I appreciate your time and your understanding.
Oh, you're welcome, sir, thank you. All right, without further questions for you, Mr. Stili, I'll let you go, and I appreciate your attendance at the meeting this evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, item number one, I would entertain a motion to accept the amended audited financial statements for F. Y. twenty-four.
Mr. Mayor, would make that motion to accept the amended audited financial statements?
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Deal to, in item number one, to accept the amended audited financial statements for F. Y. twenty-four. Do I have a second? Second from Councilman Victorin. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All those in favor of accepting the amended audited financial statements for F. Y. twenty-four signify by saying aye. Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, item number one, those amended audited financial statements are accepted. All right, we are on action item number two, Dale Jones Municipal Pool Employee Age Waiver Request. And I know Jennifer Brummel, our pool manager, is here, would you come up to the podium, ma'am? Thank you, Jennifer.
Mr. Mayor and council members, in case you don't know, I'm Jennifer Brummel, like, I don't know if we've been formally introduced or not, but I run your municipal pool in the summer, I'm a teacher during the rest of the year, but I run the pool in the summer. And I'm just coming before you because I have a lifeguard, which was probably going to happen from time to time. We hire sixteen-year-olds to be lifeguards, we used to hire fifteen-year-olds, but we now hire just sixteen-year-olds to be lifeguards at the pool, but I do have a lifeguard who's currently fifteen, he will be sixteen on May twenty-ninth. But I need him, I desperately need him. And the reason I come before you is because I need him to be paid to do his trainings before that, before he turns sixteen. So, just so you know, you guys have some pretty amazing lifeguards to go through some pretty rigorous training, and so they'll start this in this coming month. They have, on average, depending on if they're getting W. S. I. trained, which is learn to swim, so they can teach swimming lessons, and then a big group of them, because they have a big group of new lifeguards, they'll have to be lifeguard trained and certified. And so, on average, those two, those new groups, it'll be, I don't know, upwards of twenty hours of videos that they have to watch and pass tests on, and then they have, like, I can't even tell you how many hours of pool hours they'll have that week, starting the twenty-seventh, May twenty-seventh. And my lifeguard, he'll be doing those trainings in May, those online trainings, and then he'll be part of the group that gets trained, starting the twenty-seventh, for that entire week. And I would just like him to be able to get paid for his trainings. He'll be sixteen when he starts working at the pool, when he starts, when we open up for the year, for the season, but. This will probably happen from time to time, we have those May birthdays that were, and I just want you to know that back in the day, it was really easy to hire lifeguards, and we're finding right now, it is difficult, like, sports have really taken over, and so to get, you know, qualified applicants that can swim and that want, you know, that can have time to spend at the pool in the summer is pretty hard, so I need to keep who I can, and so I'd like you to think about waiving his age requirement for just a little bit until he gets his trainings done and turns sixteen.
And Jennifer, I think it's literally asking the council to waive three days, right?
Well, it is, except for he'll be clocking some hours online for taking his online classes in the month of May, so those twenty-plus hours that he'll, so, yeah.
But when he hits the ground running to work, he'll be sixteen.
When we open the pool, he will be sixteen, so, yeah.
When is the pool open?
We're hoping for June first. I have some trainings that have to take place that day as well, like, this is how intense this training is. So we are trying for the first, but my trainer will be here that day, we're going to be finishing up some trainings that day too, like, there's just not enough daylight hours, so we are trying to get it all done, but we're crossing our fingers that we're going to be open June first, so, yeah.
That's the target date.
That's the target date.
Gentlemen, we're only talking about one person?
Right now, yeah, just one person, he's the only one that won't be sixteen quite yet, so.
And since he's not doing anything, there's no liability factor, Jim?
There isn't, in fact, the F. L. A. S. A. allows fifteen-year-olds to be lifeguards.
We used to, my son got, my son was a lifeguard, and he was hired at fifteen, but we switched it to sixteen, which is probably a good call, you know, in the long run, to just have sixteen-year-olds and on up to be lifeguards, but, yeah.
There are certain restrictions hiring fifteen-year-olds, they can't work at night, and they can only work so many hours, and it just was hard for the managers to keep the schedule and all that, so.
Yeah, it's best for the long run, but just for trainings and purposes like that, like, it would just be helpful if we could get those trainings into him, so.
Gentlemen, any?
Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Brummel? All right, thank you, Jennifer.
Yeah, while I'm here, I'd like to offer, if you ever want to come to the pool, please do, and check us out, and see what's going on, we are training the week of May twenty-seventh, that week right after Memorial Day, so if you want to see how hard these lifeguards are working and the number of hours they're putting in and what their training involves, please don't hesitate to stop by, we'll be there all day, every day, so, it'll be a lot. So I just welcome you to come and check us out and see what we're doing there at the pool and how we're getting our lifeguards trained, so.
All right, and I appreciate your organizing all this and being in charge of all this.
Absolutely, yeah.
As somebody who's familiar with the pool, have you been by to see the work that's been done, and how do you feel about it?
Yeah, I stop by often, because I like to, like, I go in and take pictures, and I like to see the progress over time, so I hope to start like a little social media blitz on, so that the community can start getting excited about what's coming here in just a very short amount of time, so the progress and the change is amazing. So it's been fun to, I check it out every single week, at least a couple times a week, so I'm super, super excited about all of it, and I thank you guys for agreeing to figure out how to get this done, and we're going to have an amazing, an amazing pool, and, yeah, so, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, any more questions?
All right, thank you, Jennifer. All right, so we are on item number two, Dale Jones Municipal Pool Employee Age Waiver Request for One Employee. Do I have a motion?
I would move to waive the age request for the pool person.
All right, all right, thank you, Councilman Kelly. Councilman Kelly has a motion to, in item two, to waive the age waiver, or to grant the age waiver request. Set forth an item two for one person, do I have a second?
I would second.
I have a second from Councilman Victorin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Item number two, all those in favor of the Dale Jones Municipal Pool Employee Age Waiver Request for One Person, signify by saying aye. Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that age waiver. the long run, to just have 16-year-olds and on up to be lifeguards, but, yeah.
There are, there are certain restrictions hiring 15-year-olds. They can't work at night, and they can only work so many hours. Um, and it just was hard for the managers to keep the schedule and all that, so.
Yeah, it's best for the long run, but just for trainings and purposes like that, like, it would just be helpful if we could get those trainings into him, so.
Okay, gentlemen, any?
Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Brummel?
All right. Thank you, Jennifer.
Yeah, while I'm here, I'd like to offer, if you ever want to come to the pool, please do and check us out and see what, what's going on. We are training the week of May 27th, that week right after Memorial Day. So if you want to see how hard these lifeguards are working and the number of hours they're putting in and what their, what their training involves, please don't hesitate to stop by. We'll be there all day, every day. So, it'll be a lot. So just, I just welcome you to come and check us out and see what we're doing there at the pool and how we're getting our lifeguards trained, so.
All right. And I appreciate your organizing all this and being in charge of all this.
Absolutely. Yeah.
As somebody who's familiar with the pool, uh, have you been by to see the, the work that's been done and how do you feel about it?
Yeah, I stop by often, because I like to, like, I've taken, I go in and take pictures and, um, I've liked to see the progress over time. So I hope to, um, start like a little, a social media blitz on, so that the, the, um, community can start getting excited about what's coming here in just a very short amount of time. So, um, the, the progress and the change is amazing. So it's been fun to, I check it out every single week, at least a couple of times a week. So I'm super, super excited about all of it. And, um, I thank you guys for agreeing to, um, figure out how to get this done. And we're going to have an amazing, an amazing pool. And, yeah, so, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any question, any more questions?
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. All right. So we are on item number two, Dale Jones Municipal Pool Employee Age Waiver Request for One Employee. Do I have a motion?
I would move to, uh, waive the request, the, waive the age request for the pool person, lifeguard.
All right. All right. Thank you, Councilman Kelly. Uh, Councilman Kelly has a motion to, in item two, to waive the age waiver, age waiver, or to grant the age waiver request, set forth in item two for one person. Do I have a second?
I would second.
I have a second from Councilman Victorin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Item number two, all those in favor of the Dale Jones Municipal Pool Employee Age Waiver Request for One Person, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that age waiver, age waiver request in item two is approved. Next item on the agenda is item number three, Resolution Number 20-25-4, authorizing submission of a post-fire mitigation grant application to FEMA for the Torrington Well 16 Emergency Backup Generator Project. And, Mr. Eddington, uh, would you please read that resolution by title?
Resolution Number 2025-4, a resolution authorizing submission of a post-fire mitigation grant application to FEMA for the Torrington Well 16 Emergency Backup Generator Project.
Thank you, Mr. Eddington. And I thought, uh, Mr. Canyon was going to be here tonight, but I don't see him out there. Um, I think this is fairly straightforward. Um, Mr. Canyon is good at requesting these grants from FEMA. Um, I think there's a 25, if I'm reading this resolution correctly, uh, the city would be in for 25% of the grant award, uh, which is a pretty good deal for this. It is for the new, that Well 16, as council knows, is, is being refurbished with a house and all the things. Um, and this would be a grant. We don't know if we'll get it or not, but, uh, resolution to submit it to FEMA to support, uh, the expenses related to an emergency backup generator, so. That's about as well as I can explain it without Mr. Canyon here. So. Do you have any questions for either me, I guess, or Mrs. Strecker?
I think this is a basic service that, uh, is necessary in today's world.
Okay. All right. If I don't have any questions for myself or Miss, Mrs. Strecker, um, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-4 as set forth in item three.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve Resolution Number 2025-4.
All right. I have a motion from Councilman Deal to approve Resolution Number 2025-4. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Warren. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Item three, all those in favor of approving the Resolution Number 2025-4 regarding, uh, grant application to FEMA for the Well 16 Emergency Backup Generator Project, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that resolution in item three is approved. Next item on the agenda is, uh, Ordinance on First Reading relating to the City of Torrington Employee Compensation Management Process. And I guess I'll start. Mr. Eddington, would you please read that ordinance by title?
An ordinance amending the reenacting Chapter 2.38 of the Torrington Municipal Code, 2025 revisions relating to City of Torrington Employee Compensation Management Process.
Thank you, Mr. Eddington. And then I would call on Clerk Treasurer Strecker.
So this item was brought, um, to the attention of Wage Committee. The current ordinance references a 2010, um, wage study. And, um, it's outdated. We've had another wage studies, actually, probably a couple since then. Um, and so instead of referencing a particular wage study, we, we wanted to keep it kind of generic and, um, just reference the Torrington's, City of Torrington policies, um, um, regarding employee compensation. And we look at those every year. Um, and I think that would be more accurate to this ordinance than, than what was there originally. It's a pretty simple, just wording change, so.
I mean, it's literally one sentence, isn't it?
Yeah. The ordinance is pretty short. The original ordinance that says, "All wages for employees of the city shall be considered and determined pursuant to the City 2010 Employee Compensation Process as specifically prayer, prepared by Personnel, Systems and Services of Salt Lake City, Utah, and approved as policy."
That's the old one.
That's the old one, yeah.
Okay. And just for the sake, since you read the old one, I'll read the new one. "All wages for employees of the City of Torrington shall be considered and determined pursuant to the City of Torrington policies regarding employee compensation and approved by the governing body."
Yep.
That's what the language of the amendment.
Now, the old one makes reference to a wage study, but this one doesn't?
No, no. The, the policies, um, like I said, we wanted to make it more general and not reference a specific wage study. Otherwise, it would have to be changed every time we have a wage study. Um, those wage studies affect our policies directly, which you will approve through the budget process, um, anyway. Um, so we, we just thought that would be the best wording for this particular ordinance.
As sometimes happens with ordinances, they do slip through the cracks sometimes, and there are some things that, uh, don't necessarily fit with what we're currently doing. And at the Wage Committee, looking at this, we determined it would be better, we already have policies regarding this, and we do wage studies on a regular basis, and the Wage Committee does indeed look at compensation. So, thought this would be a, a way to create a, an ordinance that, uh, will be a lasting ordinance.
Which would require less maintenance for future staff, um, and council.
All right, gentlemen, do, any further questions for either Councilman Deal, who's on Wage Committee, actually Chairman of Wage Committee, or Mrs. Strecker, Clerk Treasurer? Seeing none, um, I will call for a vote. Item number four, Ordinance on First Reading, um, relating to City of Torrington Employee Compensation Management Process. Um, I would call, or I would seek a motion to approve this ordinance that's set forth in item four on first reading.
Mr. Mayor would move to approve the proposed ordinance on first reading?
All right. I have a motion from Councilman Victorin, item number four, to approve the ordinance that's set forth on first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Kelly. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor in item number four of approving the ordinance on first reading, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that ordinance is approved on first reading. We're on the second page of the agenda, item number five, Approval of Bills from April 2nd, 2025 to April 15th, 2025. And I would call on Mrs. Strecker.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Attached to your agenda was a list of bills for your approval tonight. And I also handed out an additional set for your consideration. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have on any of those bills.
We have a lot of, uh, mobile drug screening testing service payments. That's because we're hiring seasonal folks right and left.
It's been very, very busy right now. Um, but we are in good shape. I believe, um, we only have one, uh, seasonal position, well, two seasonal positions to fill, so.
And I think that's well
Yes.
ahead of where we were last spring.
Yep. Um, we got all the lifeguards that she was mentioning, all of those are in the process right now. Parks, cemetery, um, we have one in Streets and Sanitation, um, one in the Water Department, and one at the airport. Oh, and I forgot, the golf course. They have several as well.
One, one thing comes to my observation, Mr. Mayor, it's on the first set, page three, Creston Water Solutions. And I'm sure Tom will email us tomorrow, but, uh, we have some purchases for chlorine, um, for, for the Water Department. I'm just curious, you know, we talked, talked a few weeks back about we're making our own chlorine now, so, I don't know. Maybe there was a hiccup in, uh, chlorine maker.
That's a good question. I don't know. Do you?
I do not. And I think Tom's away at training this week, but I will definitely email Chris and ask him what those bills are for, if something happened. Do you know anything?
No.
Okay. I will let you know.
From the first set of bills, page 10, for Syntec Systems, Fuel Master, Standard Maintenance Shop, any idea what that is?
So that is for our fuel pumps. We have an, uh, annual maintenance for that. Um, and we've had to use them recently, so.
I would make a motion to approve the bills as presented.
All right. Item number five, I have a motion from Councilman Kelly to approve the bills as presented. Do I have a second?
I, I would second, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I have a second from Councilman Victorin. Are there, is there any further discussion, gentlemen?
Just real quick, before we move to a vote, Mr. Mayor, you and I spoke briefly, but maybe we should, um, mention it for the, for the listening audience and the public. Um, it looks like that CBDG, CDBG survey incentive was approved, the $5 chamber buck.
Yeah, you approved that last
But it's, obviously, the, the, the powers that be approved that incentive method, right?
Yes, they did.
So we've, we've, we're moving forward with the, those, um, Goshen bucks.
Yep.
So hopefully, community members will be encouraged to partake.
We're working on the, the automated survey right now. We're going to have a meeting this week. Hopefully, we'll get it out soon.
That's a good point, because when we left it last meeting, we had to get approval from CD, CBDG to even be able to do a
That's correct.
small incentive program, and so that was approved, yes.
Yes.
That's a good question. Thank you, Councilman Victorin. All right. I have a motion and a second on item five, Approval of the Bills. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Item number five, all those in favor of approval of the bills as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, those bills are approved. All right. We are, pardon me, we are in item number six, Public Comment, and I see Fire Chief Luis Correa back there. And I think he might have been ill last council meeting, so, welcome back. Glad you're feeling better.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And, yes, I was feeling a little bit under the weather last time, so. Um, but we've been fairly busy. We've had about 10 calls since the last meeting, um, getting into that season where the controlled burns are getting out of control and we're going to help out. Um, we also had quite a few, uh, different facilities have fire alarms going off. Um, just last night, we had a, a fairly, fairly serious, uh, carbon monoxide call that ended up being, I believe, a faulty water heater, which was
At a residence?
Yes. We're on East G. They, um, were able to, thankfully, they had a detector and, um, I think it was a, oh, a husband and wife and a small child. Um, but they were at unsafe levels. Um, other than that, that's, that's it for calls. Um, we did start our new year of, uh, our annual fundraiser, the Gun of Month. Um, this month, uh, Blair Newman was the winner. And, um, that's, that's all I got.
All right. Gentlemen, any questions for the chief?
Is it this year you host the fire convention or next year?
No, it is this year. It'll be June, oh, uh, the week, the weekend of, of Father's Day. It'll, and it'll be Thursday, Friday, Saturday that week, but.
State Fire Convention?
Yep, State Fire Convention. It will have, will host teams from around the state to come and compete in various events and, um, have a good time. I invite, invite the public to come down to Pioneer Park and, and, and get in on the festivities and, and get a glimpse of what we do for fun.
This is the first time in, what, four years, five years?
It's been, it's been longer than that. I, I couldn't tell you exactly, but I think this is probably the fourth or fifth year that we've actually had a team for quite a while. We've been, we've been out of it for a while, but.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Uh, just probably another reminder, I'm sure people get tired of it, but I, I don't. Um, to, it, we're getting into that season where folks are probably going to do some more, uh, controlled burning, getting ready for irrigation season. So it's always a good idea to call dispatch and inform our, our dispatchers what you're doing and, and when you're done as well.
Yeah, you'd, you'd be surprised at how many people, um, you know, even, even the small ones, we had a, a call. I won't, I won't, uh, put no names out there, because he's, he's a relative of mine, but, uh, he failed to call in, uh, a controlled burn and, uh, somebody in the drive-through at AJ's decided that they didn't see somebody there, so they called it in and a little bit of embarrassment on his part.
So again, the non-emergency number, I believe that's 532-7001. If you're going to have a controlled burn, let them know. So if a neighbor doesn't think it is controlled, then, and they call in, we'll know whether that's an actual controlled burn or not, and prevent the fire department from being called out.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. All right. Any further questions for the chief? All right. Thank you, chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I know other chief, Chief Matt Johnson, uh, wanted to address us in public comment.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Well, dispatch, um, it is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and I just wanted to take a quick minute to recognize our communications team. Um, the six ladies that work in that room right over there do a really, really hard job, and they do it with grace and kindness. And every single person who calls for emergency help in our county goes through our communication center, and every first responder that has the tools they need to do their job and go home safely works through our communication center. And I'm just super grateful for who they are and what they do and the sacrifice they make to keep all the rest of us safe. So, thank you.
All right. And I wanted to just say this, when I first became mayor in '23, I attended an interview process for those folks. And it is quite substantial and actually kind of somewhat int of somewhat intimidating. If, when you interview for that job, they put you through your paces. And it's organized and well thought out to see if you could handle that type of job. Can you, very briefly, chief, while you're up there, explain even the interview process that you use for applicants for those positions?
You bet. We, um, we have an assessment center process that we use. And what it's designed to do is to give folks a pretty realistic perspective of what the stress of that position will look like, um, and then evaluate their ability to perform under those conditions. So we have, uh, just your standard interview panel. Um, we have a written test, um, that, uh, assesses for aptitude. And then probably the toughest one is we actually have that person take a phone call from an I-Rate, um, or from a, uh, person who's just been involved in a serious incident. Um, and they have to get as much information from that person as they can and stay calm while they're doing it. And it's not an easy task. So, it's a lot.
Yes.
And we do have some good thespians on staff that do a good job with the-
We do. They may have received an Emmy for their, uh, performance, uh, in that circumstance.
Mr. Mayor, chief, and, and how many agencies does our dispatch center dispatch for?
Oh, let's see. Um, four law enforcement, nine volunteer fire departments, four EMS, um, and then just kind of a various and sundry other administrative assistants of taking phone calls and putting folks in the right direction. I wanna say between six and seven nine-one-one calls per day and over twelve thousand incidents a year would be about the neighborhood where we're at. I didn't pull the stats today, but I think that's pretty close. So, it's, it's a, it's a job.
Yeah.
You know, but it's amazing that a smaller town is, is, has that many calls.
Yeah, yeah. If you think nothing happens in Goshen County, come, come sit in the communications center for a couple minutes. Um, you'll, you'll have an adventure.
Well, and, and folks are trained in a good way when there's something serious to call nine-one-one.
Absolutely.
We've just drilled that into people.
Yep.
In a good way.
Absolutely. So, good people doing good things.
All right. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
All right. We are in public comment section. Is there anybody out in the seats that has a public comment? Hearing none, I also give council members an opportunity to comment.
Mr. Mayor, I, I suspect you already talked about this in the past, but just remind people, April twenty-second is the e-waste and hazardous waste day. And that's out on the West Highway, uh, where they would take that.
Should I think it's a Tuesday or Monday?
Tuesday.
Is it a Tuesday? Yeah.
Give as much detail as you can.
I, I just remember that I take my, all my burnt fluorescent, uh, bulbs and, uh, batteries and electronics and, uh-
So e-waste.
E-waste.
Hazardous waste is what it would really be.
Hazardous waste, yes. So if you have, uh, uh, containers for pesticides, uh, if you have, uh, paints-
Oil-based paints.
Oil-based paints, not latex. Latex, you can just let it dry and throw it away, but the oil-based paints needs to go out there.
And where's the location?
At the old Experiment Farm building, out on the West Highway.
Up by weed and pest.
Yeah.
Okay, so again, April twenty-second for that.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Deal. Appreciate that. Any other you gentlemen have a comment? Seeing none, we'll finish, we're done with the public comment section. Um, I would entertain a motion to leave regular session and go into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would move to, uh, resolve the council into executive session.
All right. Have a motion from, uh, Councilman Victorin to leave regular session and go into executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Warren. Any discussion, gentlemen?
If, if I could make it noted in that motion that it's for the purposes of potential litigation and personnel.
Okay, so noted. Is that good enough? Okay. All right. I have a motion and a second. Uh, to go into exec, leave regular session and go into executive session to discuss potential litigation and personnel matter. Do I have any discussion? Nope. I'll take a vote. All those in favor of leaving regular session and going into executive session as set forth in item seven signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, we will leave regular session and go into executive session. Thank you. Thank-